Well, so I'll share a story today. I had made a post in response to the whole David Chipman thing, you know, being nominated to lead the ATF and I'm very outspoken when it comes to gun control. I will say this, and I start very radically and I start very strongly. Gun control is the most racist act of violent aggression that a government can ever institute on the people that they govern. And if it's their goal, then that means it's their intent to rule.
Can I pause for a second and just note that we got Brian on here who's getting Congressman Massey on and our typical lineup includes like homeless people that believe in Bigfoot?
Welcome to the Brian Nichols Show, your source for common sense politics on the We Are Libertarians Network. The Brian Nichols Show is the fastest growing liberty podcast that brings together people from all means of political thought as we seek to have meaningful conversations about the issues you care about. At the Brian Nichols Show, our goal is to leave the audience educated, enlightened, and informed. And now your host, Brian Nichols.
Well, happy Sunday there, folks. Brian Nichols here on the Brian Nichols Show. Thank you for joining us on, of course, our phenomenal Sunday Candidate Highlight Series. Today, I am joined by Kelly Carden. Now Kelly is running for the Board of Supervisors in the 2nd District in Kern County, not Kent County, and it's in California, not Oklahoma. Don't listen to me. Apparently, I'm previewing candidates because I got not only his state wrong, but I got the specific county wrong. So that's also what happens when I'm recording, you know, like, what, 7 o'clock at night after an entire day's work? I guess that's what happens. Brian, you gotta get back to drinking more mud water, I guess? Yes, by the way, mud water, great sponsor of the show, brianickels.com/mud if you want to go ahead and get yours at discount rate. But you're not here to hear me talk about mud water. You're here, yes, as I mentioned, Kelly Carden, he's joined the program because he is running for Board of Supervisors, mind you, in 2022. But it's a great way to introduce Kelly into the role that the Board of Supervisors plays. We talk about politics being local here on the Brian Nichols Show, right? So let's focus super local. Board of Supervisors is incredibly local, specifically in California, serves sort of as a legislative body. We know Jeff Hewitt over in California as well, serving on the Board of Supervisors there. So we do have libertarians who, hey, we're making it work. So Kelly is joining the program specifically outlining some of the main issues that are raised up there in Kern County specifically. Number one, talking about water issues, oil issues, number two, and number three, the Second Amendment. A great conversation with Kelly here on our Sunday Candidate Highlight Series. So without further ado, onto the show, Kelly Carden here on the Brian Nichols Show.
Hey, guys. Hey, Brian. Thanks so much for having me on, man. So excited to be here. You know, I'm excited to talk about Kern County, tell people who I am and why I'm not the same old thing and why they need to vote for something different this time.
Well, and that's right there. Vote for something different. You're running for, as we mentioned there in the intro, Board of Supervisors, District 2, Kern County, as a libertarian. And now, really quick, let's start off Board of Supervisors. This sounds like a kind of weird, maybe more local role, but rather, it's actually a larger role specifically being that in California. Can you explain what is the role of a Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, so most counties in California are considered charter counties. What that means is they're governed by a Board of Supervisors. That means that's five individuals who are both the legislative and the executive branch of government for the county at the same time. So when I'm running for the Board of Supervisors, I'm literally running to have an impact at every level of county affairs. It's literally the top legislator. It's a top level of government here in Kern County. So it gives me the ability to look at everything that's affecting us, you know, the way that water affects us, the way that oil affects us, the way that the Second Amendment affects us, every bit of it can be affected by putting libertarians on the Board of Supervisors. In California, that's really well-known amongst libertarians because Jeff Hewitt, who is running for governor, he is, he's currently on the Riverside County Board of Supervisors. So and they rocked as far as like staying open. They definitely were the most liberty-minded county in the state as far as staying open during the lockdowns and pushing back on those lockdowns. So that is here. So that's, I'm excited.
Good, as you should be. You're running for office as a big L libertarian, and that right there obviously is going to pique some interest from folks out there beyond your traditional left, right, you know, red team, blue team. They're gonna say a libertarian. Okay, so obviously, I'm gonna need to learn more. So let's say to your average person, they say, okay, Kelly, you're a libertarian. What does that mean to you? And why do you identify as a libertarian?
So what being a libertarian means is like Matt Kiwi says it best, don't hurt people and don't steal their things. And that's how we have to look at everything that the government does. Every single law that's written, are they hurting people or are they aggressing against people in an unnecessary way? Libertarians are about getting out of your way.
Yeah, I have the bumper sticker up there for people.
Yes. The book's on the shelf behind me somewhere, man. So I-
It's a classic, by the way. And I will say, I don't mean to interrupt. It was incredibly surreal to, I too read Matt Kiwi's book as a little baby libertarian. And then fast forward to 2020, and I'm sitting in Matt Kiwi's studio talking to him about how to sell liberty. It was one of those very out-of-body experiences, but that book was so fundamental in my kind of ideas. So it's, it's actually exciting. I think you're the first guest I've had in the program who specifically mentions Matt's book. So that's awesome, Kelly. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, that, he's one of my heroes as far as libertarian guys go. You know, I got to spend some time with Larry Sharp during the California State Libertarian Convention. And the same thing, you know, another guy who I listened to, who I was in the car with by myself for two hours, just having him talk, it was cool, man.
Yeah. Yeah, it's funny when you, you get into this mindset, and I was actually just talking about this. I forget who actually it was, but you get to this mindset where you're sitting in a car, you're listening to these podcasters, and you feel like you know everything about them. And then, and then you realize that they don't know who you are. You're a download at first, but then, and that goes to why it's so important to cultivate these very authentic relationships, because beyond just, you know, the building up who we are as a greater liberty movement, let's kind of look at running local and the importance of having a strong community that is looking at people within their community as problem solvers. So you're running for the Board of Supervisors as a libertarian. So Kelly, when we're starting out the conversation, what is it that right now you're engaging in, in terms of top-of-mind issues for Kern County? And how are people perceiving the libertarian solutions that you're presenting to them?
Well, so I'll share a story today. I had made a post in response to the whole David Chipman thing, you know, being nominated to lead the ATF, and I'm very outspoken when it comes to gun control. I will say this, and I start very radically and I start very strongly. Gun control is the most racist act of violent aggression that a government can ever institute on the people that they govern. And if it's their goal, then that means it's their intent to rule. And people freak out, you know, like I had a guy today, he said, you know, so are you just saying everyone should have guns? Said, no, that's not what I said. But yeah, but we definitely should have fewer gun control laws. And then we were able to conversate from there. He assumed at first that I was some far-right gun freak. And it's like, no, man, I'm pretty, pretty easy to get along with. And I don't believe aggressing against you. So ultimately, if we, if we agree on different things, then I'm not gonna take anything away from you. And that's the goal. Right now, if you disagree with gun control laws, if the passes, they're gonna take your guns away. So that's a major act of aggression. And it's always, always, always directed directly at the black community, other minority communities, and communities that don't have the money to pay the fees, because all gun control is ultimately punitive. You can own a machine gun in California if you have the money to pay for it. So is that gun control? Or is that just disarming poor families, poor, poor American families?
Isn't that funny how that happens? You know, the, the laws always end up disproportionately impacting those people who the government just seems to have a vendetta against for some particular reason. And they always seemingly have had that, Kelly. So it's interesting. You know, you're talking about these top-of-mind issues, and it does seem to kind of go back to this dynamic. And we saw this peak its ugly head at the peak of the pandemic. It's really just this authoritarian state versus you, the individual, you, your community. And I think more and more people are growing empathetic to the libertarian arguments, more so because they saw how bad it got. And they are like, okay, well, I thought my GOP governor was gonna stand up and not do the insanity, but no, almost all of them have. So there's, they're actually open now to changing the incumbent vendor. If we're gonna go back to my, my sales mind, we want to replace the incumbent vendor. So right now, they're open to a switch. And right now libertarians have a great opportunity, I would say, to enter in as a replacement vendor in this case. So Kelly, let's look at your district specifically. Red team, blue team, I know you're a more red-leaning district. Kevin McCarthy is your congressman right now, who is the House Minority Leader, I believe is his official title. So what are the top-of-mind issues right now in your area? And why are people looking at libertarians as maybe the, the people they are actually saying, hmm, maybe we should give these guys a second look?
Well, I think what's happening the most is they, you know, you mentioned that they got to see how bad it got during COVID, but they got to see how bad it got from both sides, right? It hasn't really gotten any better. I mean, it's still pretty bad. So I think being able to draw that dynamic, they've now have in real time, the average person is seeing how the Democrats and Republicans are really the same. So here in Kern County, we're mostly running on water issues, on, on oil issues, and of course, on the Second Amendment, and then anything business and economy related, right? So I spent some time with Larry Sharp this summer, earlier this, the spring, I should say. And he told me, Kelly, don't mention the word liberty, because everyone talks about liberty. Work on results. So I said, okay, cool. What's the results for water? Like, how would, what would that mean to a, to a single mom or a single dad with a bunch of kids who's terrified of their water bill doubling? That means controlling the, the water issue at the county level. And that, so we've talked about is, is eliminating wastewater. I'm really helping the oil industries and the agriculture industries save tons and tons of water, you know, introducing products to market that can help save billions and billions of gallons every single day that, that California needs, right? And currently, what they do is they, they tell us, take shorter showers, take your grass out, even on odd day watering. So, so I explained it to somebody today. There's less than a million people that live in Kern County. The state would like us to use less than 55 gallons of water per day each. That's 20 billion gallons of water. That's nothing. Like, it's, what are we supposed to save? Are we gonna go to 40 gallons a day? But you can go to the, to the oil industry, and they're able to, currently, they recycle 21 million gallons of water a day. And that's like such a small percentage of what they can do. They can do more. The agricultural industry, we can cut their water usage down by 75% on young, non-bearing fruit and nut plants, or trees, I should say. And we're not doing any of those things because everyone wants to argue about it. And that's where I think we're getting tired of. Is it tired of seeing people argue over the issue? They want somebody to fix the damn thing.
Well, Kelly, it sounds great. You got me all interested in my, I guess, my interest has been peaked, as we would say in sales. So I'm not gonna give you any objections right now. Rather, I guess my one objection would be, and I think every libertarian's gonna hear this, great, sounds wonderful. How are you gonna do it? So what's, what's the plan? What would the libertarian plan be to help reduce the water waste or to help incentivize water being more recycled? How does that actually pan out in reality?
So you hit it right there. And libertarians, we get ourselves stuck on this issue because we've not actually thought about, about how to pay for anything. How do we actually govern as libertarians? I think that's like a, we've kind of got ourselves stuck right there, right? So it's just being open and honest with everything, right? We're not, I'm not gonna be able to eliminate spending by myself. I'm one person on a five-man board. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna pay subsidies. Stuff's gonna get paid for. So what, what is the libertarian option? Is to first off, take every win we can. If I can force spending, that's only gonna be one time, and we're gonna, we're gonna reap the benefits year after year for 30 years, that's definitely a libertarian win, right? And then other things are like, where are we gonna save the money from? So Jeff Hewitt was talking about consultant fees. So I'm researching how much money that we spend in the county on consulting fees. And it's like tens of millions of dollars. That's how stuff gets paid for. They're wasting all the damn money.
Yeah, well, it's by design. You see, time and again, there are incentive structures built in place to help really establish this kind of understood status quo. And I, I think what we're seeing more and more transparently obvious is that what's been, what's been happening over the past, I would say, really 20 years especially, is we've seen the size and scope of government, just, you know, hockey stick graph increase, has been the finger of the federal government has really reached its nasty little fingers into so many different areas that there are so many different people who are now beholden to the interests and success, unfortunately, of that federal government growing. I mean, think of the contractors, you mentioned consultants, but think of the contractors who have a tied vested interest with their budgets always being inflated. So why not continue to embrace this status quo? So really, it is going to require a lot of people to start to not just talk about doing things differently, but actually putting their money where their mouths are, or at the very least, starting to act and vote differently. So let's kind of focus on Kern County right now. You're, you're running as the libertarian, and, and people, I'm sure you're out meeting people face-to-face. When you're talking to them, I know you mentioned water, you mentioned oil, firearms, but your average person, is that the thing they're talking about? Or is there, you know, are they still thinking about the pandemic? I'm curious, your average person on the street, what's kind of the heartbeat of Kern County?
So what you notice is online is when you really get those people who want to talk about like the big-ticket issues, right? Those are you guys who want to talk about water and oil and firearms. But in person, they want to know why the grocery bills are so damn high. They want to know why it costs so much to buy ground beef, you know? So one of the ways that we're gonna do that, we want to get around that, is I'm gonna propose that we just use custom slaughterhouses, don't get inspected by the USDA and just sell that meat in county only, and drive the price down. Just remove one of those fingers out of the damn pot, right? One of those hands out of the cookie pot. And we give you the same thing with agriculture. And it can force the cost down because we're not letting the government, you know, siphon off and launder a whole percentage, a whole chunk of the, of the finances. It's crazy. You know, so that's what people want to talk about. They want to talk about why the gas keeps going up. You know, I voted for the gas tax because I wanted to have nicer roads. Now they've raised it twice in two years. And I'm like, well, that's what you told them to do. You know, so they're like, well, how are you gonna fix that, Kelly? I said, well, we're gonna tie that to a vote. And if the gas tax is gonna go up, then they've got to be able to put the money up, and they've got to convince the people of Kern County to vote that up. But we're not gonna just let them do it when they want at any given time anymore.
People are growing tired of the, I love the analogy of the frog in the boiling pot of water. You take a frog, you throw it into the pot of boiling water, it's gonna jump out really fast, right? But if you put that frog in a room temperature pot of water, and you slowly turn that temperature up, slowly but surely, the frog is boiling alive, and it doesn't realize it.
They never even jump out.
No, and they die. And that is what is happening to your average person. And I get excited when I hear the argument switched. And I tweeted this the other day, maybe it was this morning, I don't know. It was probably when I was working out and I had a thought. And you know, it was actually two days ago. I remember exactly the moment I was, I was getting my morning coffee after my workout. And I said, stop trying to correct the narrative, start setting the narrative. We libertarians especially have the ability to start leading in these conversations. So you mentioned people wanting to know, how am I gonna pay my grocery bills? Say, listen, I'm on board with you, and I would love to see an extra $5,000 in your, your bank account every single year. Want to make that happen? Vote for me because I'm going to make sure that we're gonna stop the government from taking your hard-earned money in the first place, because we believe that you can use that money in more efficient and effective ways than the government can based on your interests. And I think that's a winning message. And I've made this pitch before for like a little sales, a sales approach. Let's take a candidate that's running, say, hey, let's get $5,000, $10,000, and we're gonna find a constituent. And we're gonna say, here's a $5,000, $10,000, whatever the dollar amount is, check. And this check represents the money taken from you over the past year. Now, what we want you to do is to use this money, and all, the only condition is, is that you just have to document when you use the money and how you used it. That's it, right? To show the benefit. And, and that would be such an amazing marketing pitch, because now you're able to take a real-life situation of the person who was in that situation, how am I gonna pay my grocery bills? How am I gonna be able to get the food on the table for my family? Now you're showing not just that it works, but now we're telling a story. Now we're telling the story of that mom who was able to actually go ahead and make sure her kids went to bed at night with a full stomach. That's a different story than saying, we need to cut taxes, right? That's, that's one, that's, that's one way to do it, right? But that's a, that's a losing way to do it, Kelly. And I think, you know, as we get better at being able to communicate and tell these stories, we're gonna get more people interested. So let's kind of turn it that way. I'm curious, the storytelling perspective, let's kind of start here. When people come up to you, say, Kelly, you're a libertarian. Why are you a libertarian? I'm sure that's, that's an interesting story that you have to tell, because, hey, a lot of us out there, we are kind of the unicorn in our group of friends or in our, our place of business. And they say, I'm curious, tell me more. So when somebody says to you, what is it that made you a libertarian? What's that libertarian story on your end?
So, you know, so just my background, you know, I was born and raised, I'm not born here, I was born in Los Angeles, and I was raised in this small desert town that I've lived in for most of my life. You know, my, my stepdad's been here since 66. My kids go to my elementary school that he, that his brother went to. So it's pretty cool. And so I started off real, real conservative Republican. And then, you know, I started, I think I smoked weed the first time. I might have smoked pot. And I remember thinking like, this is cool, but why would they throw me in jail for this? And I was little, you know, I was probably like 16, you know? And, and then as you're growing older and you're realizing that you just do things that happen every day in your life, and you can go to jail for it. Like, the Republicans are like, tell you, you can't do it. And so as I was getting older, I actually got into the church. I was a youth pastor. And so I was a member of the Strong Women Justice Ray. And then the Hate on Eight campaign happened in California where they were arguing over like gay marriage and those things. And I saw the anger that we spoke about people with. And I said, I can't do this anymore. And I, so I kind of started, that was my, my, the beginning of my entry, my, my exit from the Republican Party. I still voted for Donald Trump in 2016. Damn. And then this last summer, I'd had it. I knew that I wasn't voting for Trump again. I knew there was no possible way that I was gonna vote for Joe Biden, you know, friggin' racist Joe Biden. There was no way. And I think I was won over by the meme wars, honestly, all the crazy memes that came out this summer. And that was it. I realized that, wait a minute, like, we can leave each other alone, and we don't have to fight over this? Like, why are we fighting over these stupid things? Like, who cares? Let's leave each other alone. And then I realized that as I'm getting older and I'm getting kind of more and more grumpy, I don't want people around me as much.
I find, I find the argument that you just hit on, wait, we don't have to be arguing? That actually is the strongest argument. I, and I love that, because when my lefty friends are like, it should be this way. I'm like, okay, go do it. Like, but here's the thing, just do it on your own. Like, don't make me pay for it. And if they're like, oh, but I'm a, I'm a commie. I'm like, okay, go be, go do your commie thing with your commie friends, but do it over there. Yeah, like, go do your thing. I'm fine with that. Like, just don't force me to participate in real-life LARPing. Like, just do it yourself. So I'm okay with that. And I think you're starting to see that it's not that, like, 5% person who wants to go, you know, play make-believe communist LARP world that we are, we have to worry about and really be focusing on, but rather, it's that 80% of people who are just saying like, yes, can we just kind of live, like, unironically be the coexist bumper sticker, please, just for a minute? And when we start to actually approach things with saying, hey, I, yes, I want that, and here's the way we do that. Remove the entire aspect of people being forced to contribute to support things that they don't support. And instead, let them vote with their dollars based on what they decide to invest in, where they decide to spend their money. And that, I mean, that would be such an amazing starting off point. And I think starting local and building up kind of the track record, showing it actually taking place, will be where we're going to make the strongest argument. So with the last five minutes or so, Kelly, I want to kind of turn the conversation towards the future of Kern County. When you're looking towards, you know, where Kern County will be, and let's say you do, in fact, win your seat, which of course you're going to, right? What do you envision the future of Kern County being if we are able to get some of these libertarian solutions in place as you raised them up here today?
You know, we'll start, just start on my platform, right? We're talking about water. If I get elected and we get my ideas pushed through, our water bills are gonna drop again because we're not gonna be pumping water from the California Aqueduct, the Reclamation Project. We're gonna be pumping it from the ground again, because we're gonna save so much water in Kern County that we're just gonna tell the governor, we're not taking part, right? So that they can look forward to seeing their, their water bills go back down to what they're supposed to be. You know, from there, we, we can go to, you know, oil. You know, Governor Newsom is talking about ending our oil industry and giving no more permits for different things. And there, the same thing, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, the complaint is, is how are they, the pollution of the oil fields? Well, we're gonna work on that. There's free market products out there that we could introduce to, to, to their industry that, you know, I spoke to the CEO of one company, and I said, I said, Grizz, how much water can you save? You know, in the oil fields, how much can be recycled? And he said, Kelly, every, every gallon that comes out of those pumps, we can recycle and use again. It doesn't have to get pumped into the ground and left in evaporation ponds that then poison people, right? So they can look forward to having a healthy oil industry. And we're gonna lock the gas tax in, right? So people, we can see regular oil price, you know, gas prices come back down. You know, we talked about agriculture and them saving money and them saving water, you know, and we're gonna do the same thing with that, you know? If you elect me and we get these ideas through, you're gonna see your, your food bills go down, you know? And then if you're, if you're a Second Amendment fan and you want your firearms, we are gonna nullify federal gun laws in Kern County. We are gonna take the 10th Amendment Center approach, and we're just not gonna take part.
So it's carden4kern.com. I will include that link in the show notes, especially for you audio listener. I know your average listener listens to the show. They're driving to and from work likely, or they're multitasking. Don't worry, just go to the show notes, it's right there. Also, we'll include all your social media, but for your YouTube listener, they see it, it's @carden4kern as well. I'm assuming Twitter, Facebook, what was it, Instagram, I think I saw as well?
I have Instagram and Facebook so far. I haven't done a Twitter.
No Twitter yet.
I'm not the most like, social media savvy guy, you know?
Don't worry, you're missing a dumpster fire. It's a grand old time over on Twitter. Yeah, I recently surpassed 10,000 followers. And I kind of looked at that number and I said, really? Really? And then I looked around and I said, really? This is what we're, like, is that an accomplishment? But alas, here we are. And thank you, Kelly, for all you're doing, running for office there in Kern County for the Board of Supervisors in District 2. Now with, with folks who are in your district, they are interested in supporting you. So here, a few things, we got some call to actions. Number one, if they want to go ahead and support your campaign, where can they do that? Number two, they want, go ahead and vote for you. I mean, that's kind of important, right? When, where, how? Kelly, floor is yours.
So first thing first, if you want to support me, go to my website, follow me on social media. Put in your information for the volunteer page on my website. We are not taking donations yet, but when we do, the buttons will be, be live on everything. When you want to vote for me, we're gonna vote next summer. It's February 14th is the filing day, 100, 100 days after that is primary. And then if we get through there, the general election is on November 8. You know, and then from, and then if, we're gonna be out in the community. If you can help, please help. You don't have to live here. You can, you can text bank, you can phone bank. We need those things too. I need help with social media. If maybe you're out there and you love social media, call me, message me, we will, I could put you to work. I definitely need the help. I'm, I'm a nobody, Brian. Like, I was literally unemployed. I'm still unemployed. You know, my, my high-end job was eliminated. I used to be the, an operations supervisor at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. And I, it's gone. You know, I worked my, my butt off, crawled every, every foot. And to have my dreams taken away because Gavin Newsom closed down our state was, was heartbreaking.
Well, you know, they say that, the expression is, well, nobody can really make a difference. Well, then one day I realize I'm nobody. Well, hey, if you're starting off, Kelly, as a nobody, and you've already gotten to this point, I think District 2 would be in amazing hands to know that they had somebody at the helm like you. So with that being said, folks, if you want to go ahead and support Kelly and all of his ventures, again, links in the show notes, carden4kern is the social media handle, Kelly Carden. Thank you so much for joining us here on the Brian Nichols Show.
Thank you, Brian.
All righty, folks, that's gonna wrap up my conversation with Kelly Carden. Yes, Sunday Candidate Highlight Series, another one in the books. We are talking to dozens of these amazing liberty candidates. Folks, if you are getting value from what we're doing here at this Sunday Candidate Highlight Series, I would love to hear about it. First and foremost, do me a solid. Share today's episode specifically if you're in Kern County in California. It's important we go ahead and get Kelly's campaign out there. But number two, I would love to hear about it. Please, brianickels.com/reviews. Give us a quick five-star rating and review. Tell us what you're getting from these Sunday Candidate Highlight Series. Over on the YouTube, I see a lot of folks going ahead and leaving comments there. Hey, take that one extra step. Head over to brianickels.com/reviews and just leave us a quick five-star rating and review, because, hey, number one, that's how we help get us on more people's radar, right? Increasing our eyeball reach in terms of getting on people's, what, in their, their sector, their world, their spheres of influence. This is how we get into their world by, by, number one, entering into the conversations they're having about, as we talked about here today with Kelly. But number two, by helping raise awareness, and that starts with you guys, sharing the message and helping, supporting the program. So again, Brian Nichols Show. with Kelly. But number two, by helping raise awareness and that starts with you guys, sharing the message and helping supporting the program. So again, brian nichols show dot com forward slash reviews. Now I said, share today's episode. Yes. Go ahead. Make sure you tag Kelly and tag yours truly. And you can do that at B Nichols Liberty, Twitter, Facebook and minds.com as well as parlor, parlor.com. Now candidly, I, I pretty much use Twitter and Facebook exclusively. So good luck with minds and parlor. But Twitter and Facebook, you can find me over there at B Nichols Liberty. While you get in touch with me, email me, brian@brian nichols show.com. Got a guest you want to go ahead and suggest to the program? Or if you, uh, you yourself, hey, if you're a guest, you think would be a great guest here in the program, you represent a brand. You think that you have a great topic or service that you are presenting here to the greater liberty world? Solutions to the problems we see out there. I would love to hear about it. So make sure you email me, brian@brian nichols show.com. All right, folks, coming up here on Monday. Yes, we are returned by our great friend Jeremy Todd, talking all things sales, specifically storytelling. Now we've had different guests on the program talking about the value of storytelling. But now we're going to go into the specifics, taking storytelling and directly applying it to the sales process. Make sure you've hit that subscribe button. So you're not missing a single episode. By the way, make sure you've hit, uh, the, the subscribe button over on the Patreon. If you have not yet, $5, $10 a month. I would appreciate your support either way. But with that being said, it's Brian Nichols signing off here on the Brian Nichols Show for Kelly Carden. We'll see you Monday.
Thanks for listening to the Brian Nichols Show. Find more episodes at brian nichols show.com.